Thank you. Yeah, we're excited.
Moving on to item C.
Okay. Our financial reports tonight are through the end of December. In the general fund, as of the end of December, we had approximately nineteen point two million dollars in the bank, which ties to our, our cash flow. And again, I believe we're going to be fine with our cash flow for over the summer. We had expensed approximately thirty-eight percent of our budget and received approximately seventy-four percent of our revenues. In the next couple of months, I'm not sure if Julie did it in July or not July, January or February, with the vote passing for the capital project and the authorization, the capital reserve funds have been moved into the capital fund to start paying for the beginning costs of the capital projects, the architects, the VCC, those types of things. In our cafeteria fund, revenues exceeded expenditures again by almost sixty thousand dollars. I think that's a more reasonable number than we've seen in the past, so the expenses and the revenues are catching up to each other to be more equal. In the federal fund, everything's running fine. Julie did do a drawdown requesting funds of a little over four hundred thousand dollars. And the only other thing I had, which I think is important, at the beginning of our budget season, we were concerned about our utilities usage and the cost because of the volatile market. They're both coming in under budget, so that, that's good news for us.
I'll move on the grid, but before I do that, you'll, I was supposed to make an administrator comment and I forgot, so with your permission, I'll read that. Unified sports, I just wanted to give you an update on that, so I'm going to do that now as you get a small gift. We are officially into year two of our unified program. Unified club has one hundred and thirty-two members actively participating. I'll just email this to you. Our current project is organizing and creating materials for inclusion week in March. The students have chosen a disability each day to educate their peers on and are creating stickers that state the theme "Choose to Include." The high school program will be sharing materials with the middle school team when they host their inclusion week. The high school club is also looking to go to Parkdale and read some stories that choose to include at the elementary classroom. The newest addition to the unified program is our bowling team. Bowling has twenty-four members, which includes thirteen athletes and eleven partners. They participate each week in practices and matches. The team does have a record of two and one, beating West Sonica seven and two, Holland seven and two, and a close loss to Frontier at five and four. Their next match is Mac, da, da, Max is scheduled for Wednesday, February eighth. Well, that already happened, so ignore that. I'll tell you when their next match is after that. The bowling season will wrap up Tuesday, March seventh, with a culminating event at Airport Lanes. The culminating event is comprised of forty-six different schools at an all-day bowling event. The program will have a few weeks off and then kickoff season two of unified basketball. The club advisor, team coaches, chaperones would like to thank the board for all of their support with the small token of their appreciation and remind you to always choose to include. So that's from Laura Radley and Claire Kavanaugh and Tara Arnold.
Emily Crowe.
And Emily Crowe up at the high school, and they wanted you to have little bracelets. And you all get one too, and Mr. Lowery, you can have one too if you'd like. Okay, grid. Real fast, because I know we, we ran long here. Long story short, the grid looks good. In terms of the expenditures, we're kind of just where we last left off, trending slightly positive, nothing of significant concern. You are going to notice some changes for the better in the revenue. State aid, the conservative estimate does look like it's coming in much stronger than expected. Erie County sales tax, again, continues to look strong. We're, we're not going to hit the numbers we were at last year, but our fears are not being realized. Other revenues, really just interest, earnings and rates improving there. And you will notice that we have, through the Yeoman's effort of Jen Appenheimer, she has filed for four hundred thousand dollars in FEMA. We've gotten a hundred and eleven thousand in. We have another hundred and twenty, thirty on the way, and she's tracking down the final amount, so that should all come to the good. So, long story short, when all is said and done, revenues are at about half a million more than expected. Expenditures are about two hundred thousand less than expected, and that brings us to a total of about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand and change. But I do need to remind you that the first four hundred, and I think we're going to present at four sixteen, is already spoken for. So, we're trending in the right direction, no real surprises. Personally, three hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, and a forty-two million dollar budget, it's, it's not nothing, but it's, it's, we did a really good job budgeting, and we don't appear to have any issues that will surprise you.
Any much questions for?
I have a couple of comments going back on the report, too. So, regarding the sales tax, the, I, I think that's very conservative, that hundred thousand. I think it's going to be considerably more than.
I agree.
I took a, just a calculation. I'm assuming there's five months recorded in the revenues and sales tax currently. I believe that.
We have two quarters received, so we have.
First quarter included part of, of June from the previous year.
Correct.
So, we're, we're coming in at a rate per month, which is significantly higher than a hundred thousand, and we don't even have December figured in yet, so I'm just thinking we've got some more room than a hundred thousand.
Agreed. Agreed, just being conservative with the talk of the recession.
Now, I want to go back to the finance report. The star reimbursement account, have we received the star money yet? The, the show.
But might not be on the December ones. I think we've received it in January.
I'm sure they paid it. I know it was a little bit later, but that, that'll be recorded in the revenues in, in January. And then the other, the expense line item, the legal expense line item, I took it that out, I took a look at that. Now, we've got, between expenditure and encumbrance, we've got eighty-nine percent of that budget as of June thirtieth. Either it's like a spend or a reserve, so that, I'm assuming that line item is going to require some sort of large transfer at the end of the year or thing common doubt in the next six months.
Which line item?
Legal.
Oh, legal, yes. We had to do some budget transfers because of the legal, yes.
December, you've got either encumbered or spent eighty-nine percent of that budget.
Correct. We're going to over expend our legal this year.
It looks like it, looks like something, but you, you have, you're more privy to that information. The other expenditure line item looked like they're holding pretty well. You know, I think this is very helpful here, and it seems to tie into the information I'm looking at on the, on the report. Thank you, John.
Thank you. I'd call ours for your comments, and thank you.
Other thing on the sheet that I know came from Mr. Brunson and Mr. Blowers, for the year six plan, they want to plant corn around the outfield with the baseball and softball diamonds.
Just.
Very filled with greens.
Row of corn, just around the outfield, sorry. Go ahead, a little punchy.
Comments or questions on those?
I just want to thank Jen Appenheimer for her work on that FEMA. It has been extremely difficult. They're in their feet and unwilling to cooperate on things that they promised we would receive reimbursement on, and so she has not given up. They've reached out to our local officials, Senator Schumer and others, to help us in that process, and it's starting to come in, but she's been working on it for months.
Over a year, eighteen months, yes. And I'll show you when we do the presentation, there's one piece that we're really working hard to get our money, but we're having a little bit of a.
They told us to do. Take care of the kids, take care of the families, we'll reimburse you, and then, nothing.
After them.
So she's doing.
Thank you for the update. Moving on to item D, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school district budget. Down arrow. Might have to turn it on and turn it off.
Okay, there is. Okay, there you go. The agenda, so, you know, we're making some, some nice progress, because the governor has moved some of the information forward, which is helpful, so they're able to kind of work through each department. And again, this is, is a preliminary, what we're looking at and considering for next year, but we still have additional information to come in, but I think we're farther ahead than we normally are. So here's the things that we'll cover during the presentation. So I'll just continue on. Again, you know, we use the values and vision as our guiding force between all the decisions that we're making. So as the principals and directors are working with their people to, to make decisions about next year, like the course catalog and those types of things, this is kind of what's, what's keeping us focused, like, for instance, the new sustainable agricultural course, you know, really focusing on learning excellence, you know, is part of that value. So budget finance is, the committee is a really big part of the budget development. So we meet the Monday prior to the board meeting, Monday of the week prior to the board meeting, actually. And so we've had a couple of meetings on the ninth and on the thirtieth. Our next meeting will be on the thirteenth, which will prepare us for our next, will be on March first. As we're saying, we're talking about FEMA, and it's getting some positive news here. You can see where we're really due about four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. It's been really difficult to, to bring this money in, but Jenna's been persistent, and, you know, you can see here, we received a hundred and eleven thousand in full, and then the two pending amounts, we're really confident that those are being.
Got new information on the barriers today. We got another email from FEMA, and we're in the final step, and then the money will flow. We're almost there with the thirty-nine thousand. The one that we're struggling with is the top one, the hundred and forty thousand. We're in our second appeal process with FEMA. It's been a bit frustrating, their denials. Their first denial was based on that we didn't have the authority to deliver meals during the pandemic, that that was the town's responsibility. So, of course, we provided the documentation from Governor Cuomo that we were directed to do that. And then the second appeal denial, it stated that again, and then it contradicted itself further down in the appeal. So, with Mr. Brunson's help, we have Marnie helping us with the second appeal on how to phrase that in a nice diplomatic way to try to move the process forward. And we'll be reaching out again to Senator Schumer, to Jill LeBrand, and to Jacob's office with that.
Saying the state exceeded its authority in telling us that the federal government would.
No, no, they said we didn't have the authority. It was the town's responsibility to do, to do that, which is not correct. It was our.
How would the town deliver?
Correct, so that's where the frustration is, that their denials don't even logically make sense, so.
During plan, again, we have to keep this in mind, so this will play, act as in terms of our obligation, we need to keep the reserves as part of the presentation pretty much every time, just to remember as we come through the budget process and if there are monies available, you know, what reserves are we looking at, which ones are we focused on maybe for the upcoming years, so the suggestions are the ones with the X's, ERS, and TRS, again, technology, the capital reserve, and then I believe the last one is the repair reserve, yeah.
Intending that we will fund those.
Yes.
Some are to fund, some are to use. So it's both, like, the capital reserve, where that money's being transferred, it was transferred, I just don't know if it was the end of January or the beginning of February when Julie actually did it, based on the authorization for the capital project. So, but that doesn't mean that we can't fund it at the end of the year if there's money available, so it's, it's both.
That's a great point, so we'll be using all, all of the capital reserve for the current project that we're working on, but that doesn't mean at the end of the year we're funding it as we're thinking about five years.
The X's involve the, the, the funds that you intend to address, either by adding or removing.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
The, so the capital reserve, and I brought this up at a previous meeting, but I don't remember now, did we set a cap on the capital reserve, how much that could be funded for?
I believe, and I'm going by memory, I believe it was eight million dollars.
Okay, so how much have we put in this? That is the number, okay.
Minus interest, because interest doesn't count, so I'd have to.
So if we're going to continue to fund it, it would be eight million less.
Less, correct.
I was going to say page there, yeah. Okay.
Does everybody understand that? So when we funded it for eight million, what it means is that we put, let's just say we put in one point seven million dollars. Now that reduces it to six point three million dollars. So we can't fund it back up to eight million, we can only put six point three million dollars into it, so that's like the total that we can give and take.
Over the life.
Over the life of that.
Would there be any benefit?
Oh, sorry, go ahead. No, no, that's okay, go ahead.
Is there any benefit to just closing this out and opening up a new one and transferring these funds into a new one instead of a new term, or is it?
I think not until, not until we expend this, because the term is ten years.
And when was it approved by the voters, or?
I'd have to go back. Two years ago, maybe? I, I can't remember. Maybe two years ago, but I'd have to find the authorization.
I don't think it would be wise to go back to the voters right now for authorization.
No, if it's ten years or only two years in, I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just wanted to clarify. I'm good.
Could I ask that maybe we, for folks who are not watching our presentation but may just choose to download the slide deck, maybe we could change that last column to say something, activity projected or something, something that indicates we're going to touch these funds in some way, but that, right now, the language in the X is.
Projected activity.
That works. Just explain what the X means. Projected activity at the top, and X would qualification that there will be activity there, and if that's all we have to share right now, that's fine. Right now, the X is, might make folks question.
In two weeks, it'll be in that presentation.
Perfect, thank you.
So, taking a look at the state aid runs, again, we got this condition, as soon as we usually do, I think most of you have seen this, you can see the foundation aid has been a really positive thing for us over the last couple of years. You can see some adjustments, and again, these are still estimates, we don't know these for certain, but this is just the best guess at this point in time.
And on the bottom is the carve-out for the, the high-impact tutoring. I don't know, early, early understanding of this from the governor is that it's to supplement, not supplant, which, as you were saying, Mr. Brunson, would be new program, new people, new, something like that, we're not exactly sure. I'm hoping that maybe that'll change a little bit. I think a lot of districts have addressed the tutoring through the stimulus funds, so it would be nice if it could be a bridge, this money, as coming off of the stimulus, instead of a, you can't supplant.
This accounting is all done in the general fund?
Yes.
Okay, so the revenue.
Except for UPK.
So, no, the revenue numbers are good, but we'd be transferring or increasing appropriation side to a hundred and fourteen.
We'd be doing, yeah, I, I don't know yet, we're still waiting to see. Once the legislative budget comes out, that'll become more clear to us what we have to do regulatori-atorally. The only numbers that, not that I'm concerned about, just that I know from experience, when we get these runs are the excess cost aids, and we did this last year, bringing on MAG. I wasn't exactly sure on where to go with that, and the finance committee may remember that I had MAG do an estimate for us, too, on the excess cost aids, and then I took the difference between the state runs and MAG and increased those numbers by half.
Now, that's a good move.
And the, the way it's looking this year, I may adjust that even further.
Adjust it which way?
So, but I'm still, it's so preliminary still. So, still early, conservative, looking at those numbers.
And the, the high-impact tutoring is actually part of the.
Foundation aid.
Foundation aid, so the one point of one million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that we're getting in foundation aid, they're saying we have to use a hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars for tutoring, so they're taking that control, right, in the school districts, and, and kind of forcing us to use it for that, that tutoring, which is not, you want to give me a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to, additionally for tutoring, that's okay, but taking it away from our foundation aid is, is not, is not helpful, Michael, it is not helpful.
Well, and it's a, it's a big question mark in the budget process, because you, you know, you know what the revenue will be, you know what the foundation revenue will be, and that includes the hundred and fourteen thousand, but you don't know what to budget for expenditures, because you don't know whether you can, you just don't know. You know, because they haven't given you any guidance as to how this money can be expended, but it seems to me you're going to need a line somewhere in the budget if they don't give you instruction. You're going to need a hundred and fourteen thousand dollar line on the expenditure side to balance it off. Otherwise, you're going to, if, if they tell you you have to do new programming, you're going to run a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars short on everything else if you don't do it, so. The, the simple solution right now is to just put a line on the expenditure side.
So, so, so what it's kind of doing is forcing school districts to do something that may not be the most impactful for that.
Oh, yeah, well. There may be some creative ways of getting around.
More to look at. You know me, I'm pretty.
Right, with the UPK, if you go back to the UPK, it was two hundred and twenty-one thousand additional that is projected. What can that money be used for?
So, you have to be very careful with that, because that's a, they break that down to a per pupil amount, so I think it comes out to around five thousand, four hundred dollars per pupil we enroll. So that's our potential amount we could get, but I think that comes out to a hundred and eleven students right now. We only have eighty, I'm going to go with eighty-five, that have registered, even though enrollment's still open for another week. So we, if we only enroll eighty-five, not all hundred and eleven, we won't get the five ninety-nine, four hundred. But it can be used for anything to run the pre-K program, it can be used for salaries, it can be used for materials, supplies, any of those things, equipment, furniture, anything that we need to set up our program.
Not a bathroom. Well, it wouldn't come, there's not a.
They can't exceed the per pupil. You're not going to get a bathroom.
Paying fifty-four hundred dollars per student for a bathroom, it, it's not going to.
You need the per pupil amount to pay the.
Salaries.
To pay the salary. So that.
I want those too.
So, yeah, it would be nice if we only used four hundred thousand for, for the program, for the eighty-some-odd students, and then, and then had the, the balance for being able to do what kind of stuff that you're talking about, but it doesn't work now, so.
Because you can imagine with four-year-olds and three-year-olds, because some start as three, there are toileting and potty training that needs to take place, and when there's not a bathroom in there, it does cause some issues.
And if it's not there, it needs to be right adjacent, you know, it has to be right close. So, yeah, so it's, there's, there's some creative thinking going on about that, too. But the, so from a budgetary point of view, it sounds like when you know pretty close to how many students you're going to have, you'll know how much to budget on both the, the revenue and the expenditure side, because it would be a mistake to budget the five ninety-nine on the revenue side, because you'll end up with a deficit.
But that's not part of the general fund budget, that's in the federal funds. So, it's a different, it's a different funding. And if I may, one of the legislative opportunities that they're pushing for, the advocacy, is changing that hundred K capital outlay to two hundred and fifty. We might be able to do toilet rooms for two hundred and fifty, if that went through, but if it doesn't, it has to be a capital project. It, it's just not feasible.
How many UPK rooms would we need for these eighty-five students?
So, UPK is capped at eighteen, you can't have more than eighteen. So right now, we have four classes with seventy-two, we would do another room of eighteen.
So you'd need five.
So an additional A, an additional teacher.
So there's no way you're going to do five bathrooms, no matter what you, you get in terms of, of a change in that, in that factory, so there has to be a different solution.
Okay, so here we are, we started talking about our priorities, and so I'll just kind of go then, like, through by school and department. So we looked at Parkdale, and so building subs are a request from each of, of the buildings, but you can see the cost is a little bit over seventy-six thousand dollars, because it's hiring a full-time teacher with benefits, and so it's not inexpensive, but it's a, it's a really big benefit to, to the, each of the buildings because of, of sub shortages and issues. Really fortunate that our, our teachers volunteered to sub during the day, so we still have a number of teachers who are willing to pick up assignments during their prep periods. We worked that out as a contractual piece, oh, gosh, a few years ago, and that still continues to help us, but sub shortages is still, even though we raised stuff, hey, advertising, it's gotten better, but it's still a challenge every single day for all three.
Don't we have a building sub at Parkdale?
We do, yes, we do.
So you're suggesting two?
No, 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 it's the idea that funding going forward is looking questionable because of the cost.
And I can answer that. It's part of our stimulus funding, and we had those even worse severe, I don't know how to say it, substitute issues during the pandemic and coming off of the pandemic. So we had the stimulus funds, and we hired last year and this year on building-based subs, but I don't know if those are sustainable going forward.
So this seventy-six thousand would be to.
That would be.
Supplant the federal money and put it into the general fund.
To continue with those.
To continue the program that already exists.
Right.
And so, again, they're requesting some additional AIS support, twenty-five at Parkdale. The, the sixth assignments for sixth grade is budget neutral. Additional clubs, again, there's a lot of participation in our extracurricular activities, and our kids and teachers are coming up with some really great ideas for clubs, both at middle school and high school, and we're also starting our clubs off at, at Parkdale, and First Pod Class Club has been a big hit, and so we're, we're going to be adding two additional clubs, right, sometime, this year or next, you know, we're working through the process. So, so that's been just a, a big desire of our students, again, a building sub for the middle school as well, and some equipment, and we're going to be doing a, a transfer from contractual line. Again, curriculum, this is for Miss Lyons, just looking for some additional funding for some contractual services and conferences, technology, we're looking at some Chromebook replacement and i, iPad cards for UPK and K, and so that would be more likely than to come out of the tech reserve, and we talked a little bit about that before, so that's a question there. And then an increase in cyber insurance coverage, that would be about twenty-five thousand.
And that's a guess right now, because we need to go out and price that, quote it, and it's to have greater coverage. I think we're at a million dollars now, but what we're seeing is that you would need four million.
The average breach right now is costing K through twelve school districts four point three three, so.
So the twenty-five thousand would give us, get us up to approximately?
It's a guess. It's a guess based on our current, on, current premium, so that's just a guess, we need to go out and quote.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we bought all these Chromebooks at the same time. We, we bought eighteen hundred of them?
Nope.
We didn't.
They've been staggered.
They've been staggered on purpose for the plan for replacements.
So what was that big purchase that we did in the summer a few years ago?
That was a, a bigger portion of the dam, but there were, there were lots of.
So the, so that bunch did not include fifth and ninth grade, is that the idea?
Well, the idea is, is that they rotate through, so like, we give them a Chromebook when they come in in kindergarten or, rather, first grade, they use it through fourth grade to get a new one in fifth grade for middle school, and then they'll get a new one in ninth grade. So we're kind of in the middle of that, so. So, we're kind of in the middle of that, so those kids who are transferring from fifth grade to fourth grade to fifth grade, they may have only had the Chromebook for three years, but we're going to start that process, so they're in a-
All right, so in other words, you're not using the full five-year life expectancy of the Chromebook for some of these.
You really don't even have a five-year life.
I wouldn't ever put a five-year life on a Chromebook. I think three years is good with the amount of where in terror they travel. We bought cases for them, and they're getting a longer life, but I think that is really hopeful that never loses.
Yeah, going back to Dan's point, though, the five-year, the problem is, we did-
Yeah, for this round.
It was an egg-shaped cycle of when we started with some of those bigger purchases. This is going to start rounding out that cycle, so that is predictable every year.
And that's fine, that makes more sense, you know, because buying them all at once and then having them go bad all at once, just didn't, I didn't know how, that's part of why I thought we had this technology reserved, because they were going to crash all at once. But I remember watching and visiting with the folks that were doing that in the technology department that summer, and there were stacks and stacks and stacks of these things, and I thought I remembered them saying they bought 1,800 of them, but I, maybe I'm-
Not that many. We did, it was a, we did front-load it, and like, there were a couple, but it wasn't a perfect cycle, and this will get us that flooding.
All right, that's fine.
And we've already started the replacement cycle, and it's part of the one-time purchases out of the stimulus funds. So, we pushed off using the tech reserve and used the stimulus funds for some of that cycle to make this last longer.
Ideally, really, the Chromebooks should be replaced in a three-year cycle, but we're trying to go four, so that it goes from one to four, five to eight, and then nine to 12, but technically, they're, that's why they're so inexpensive, because they don't last forever.
What do they cost now, $500?
No.
No, I think we're paying, this year's round was $347, including the licensing for them. Chrome, though, is the operating system that sits on it, and based on the version you purchase it with, it's only sustained for maybe four years for updates and patching. Even if we were able to get the life of the hardware to last longer, the support and security on it does fall off.
The one you gave me still looks brand new. Of course, I don't lug it around to board meetings, so I'm likely to drop it in the parking lot.
I believe in the worries.
Well, I think mine would last for about, my car is 14 years old, so I could keep the Chromebook that long, but it sounds like it's going to explode in the corner of my office.
It's impossible, it just-
Yeah, exactly, Mr. Phelps, your Chromebook will self-destruct in three years.
So, from the personnel, again, just some small increases in conferences and materials and supplies, high school, looking to add two co-curricular clubs, moving the, one of the world language teachers from .8 to 1.0, tech increases in supplies, again, you know, like, the STEAM, the STEAM program's really great, and all those new tech courses are really great, but the supplies are very expensive. So, you know, we need to continue to increase the supplies in order to meet the needs of the courses. Gen Ed increases to interiors and supplies, and then again, looking for a building sub.
Language, are you looking for English or Spanish?
It would be Spanish.
So, adding these building subs in for next year's budget is part of the process of phasing out the need for the federal money to retain program.
Right.
We're going to have to do this with all of the federal, the staff members that are being paid by the federal money sooner or later, we're going to have to put them in the budget. This is the first step in that direction, is that the idea?
With these ones, it's a discussion about what can be sustained and what can't be sustained from the positions that we added. So, do we want to sustain these, sustain them all, how we're going to balance that?
That's a really good approach, because you use the word sustain, I'm thinking of priorities. I mean, what programs, like a better word, that were being paid for other grants that we need to move to general fund because they're a high priority for us, it seems like those could be the first dollars moved over, and that, it sounds like that's the direction.
Right, and which, and these are the discussions we need to have, which are the most priority.
Is it possible that everything could go in? It's possible, but unlikely.
Well, somewhere along the line, if you could provide us a list of the staff that are currently in the federal money and that will have to be transferred over the next two years into the regular budget, it would be helpful to look at.
Sure. And so, in special ed, we're looking, again, we're going to be providing a report on the audit, but part of the audit was to add some clerical support, again, and this relates directly to what we're able to do in terms of like stacking and resuming that high-cost excess aid back, and so there's been, you know, Aaron has done a brilliant job, and he's been really able to kind of address those issues, and it's brought in, you know, hundreds of-
A considerable amount of excess cost aid above what we even budgeted for doing that approach from last year with MAG. It's so considerable that I'm still very conservative about it because I don't know if I believe it yet.
What are we talking about?
Access cost aid and stacking. So, the approach that I used last year, taking the governor's budget, the legislative budget, getting the numbers from MAG, doing it halfway, even doing that, what we're projected to get this year is considerably more than using that approach. But it's so considerably more, I don't know if I 100% believe it, so that's why I'm still taking a conservative approach on the grid.
And it's a good plan, because if it does come in more, it's a way to manage the fund balance, to bring it in next year, because next year, I guess next year now we're talking about '24, '25, I mean, it gives you a little bit of flexibility, so I would rather-
Right, and how far to go, so I'm still being-
You can't push everything to the limit because it's going to blow up in 2020.
Right, so I'm still being conservative in thinking about how to estimate those.
That makes sense.
And one thing Aaron found is that she actually corrected our consultant, they were doing something incorrectly, and she did so much research and found the correct way to do it, because she called them and they said, "Oh, you're correct, we're going to have to correct that process," that they're using the school districts across.
Across the state.
So, she's very, very good. She's very, she's very good.
Who are we talking?
Aaron Jameson, the TOSA.
Yeah, it's the TOSA, yes, yeah. Cindy's office. 2.0 FD, 811 classrooms, started talking about bringing students back and the need for 811 support within the district, so we're thinking it would be two teachers and aides that would be hired for those two classrooms, one teacher, one aide for each, and it would be about $152,000, but that would be offset by the tuition that we're starting, basically, where those kids are off-campus, being educated in different schools, they're coming back to us, we save those tuition dollars, and so those costs will hopefully be offset.
Right, and it's just too soon in the process to know exactly what that offset is. We meet with BOSIs tomorrow, I think, for our BOSIs participation, and that's when I start getting the information.
So, on that BOSIs list that you gave the committee, the finance committee, that showed basically very little, if any, change from one year to the other, in that one, the $152,000 was in for BOSIs, so it-
I don't know if it's 152, right, something in there, right, I don't know the exact offset.
The cost for these children, these students-
Could be neutral.
Was in your plan originally, so if indeed this $152,000 goes in the general fund budget, then we could expect to see some, something offsetting that in the BOSIs budget, which would be, which would make it less than what we're currently budgeted.
Or the tuition budget.
Or the tuition budget.
So, and we don't know exactly where those offsets are yet.
By tuition budget, you mean the revenue budget for tuition from outside?
The tuition that we pay to outside agencies.
Other than BOSIs, so students that go to other programs.
Right, right, so I wanted to acknowledge that that's there, but I just don't know what it is yet, there's, it's too soon.
Ryan, where would those classes be?
There would be one in the middle school, one at Parkdale, right here.
Currently, we have one at the middle school and one at Parkdale, but regulations are such that you can only have a 36-month age range in those classes, so with Parkdale being a K through four, well, UPK, but we're not counting UPK, that's different, K through four, right now, our kiddos in that class are third and fourth grade. I have some incoming kindergarteners that can form a class with K1, 2, I'm not sure where I'm going to put 2. I have the fourth graders, there's six of them coming up to the middle school, but they're too young to be with the current class because they will have eighth graders next year. So, it's just a bunch of shifting.
So, 181 doesn't necessarily mean 181, there might be only four students in a particular class, for instance.
But you can still stack for the whole cost of that room and divide it by four instead of by eight, because you divide by the, right, you divide by the actual number of students in the room.
When you're figuring out the cost.
That's, that's good to know.
So, from the district level, again, we talked about those TOSA adjustments, Aaron in the people services office, Lisa Brown, who is working in technology, also Brian Lombardo, who is currently on special assignment as our athletic director, so we're going to be, it's like, those numbers aren't quite available yet, so we didn't want to put those in, but we'll have those for our next presentation. Also, the five nurses salary adjustments, right now, we have three nurses on staff, so we'll be making some adjustments to their salaries, and again, that's in response to the market in terms of we have five nurses, two of them have, one left and one retired, so now we're down to three, and so when we went through the hiring process, we realized that we need to make some adjustments in the salaries, so we're going to start with our current staff, and then also be able to advertise at a more competitive rate as we look for new positions. And we talked a little bit about the SEL coordinator, you know, we've been working a lot with SEL and DEI and restorative practices, really think that we need somebody to kind of coordinate it for the entire district if we're going to be able to pull a program together that's going to be effective for the long term, the portable stage, and that's related to outdoor graduation primarily, so we've moved our graduation outdoors, it's been a big success, parents and the students really seem to enjoy it, so we're going to continue down that route. It does, you know, the weather's a little bit of a problem, but we always have a rain date, and so we need a stage, though, that is suitable to do that. A piece million to go through the last couple of years, and it's looking a little rough, so we need a stage that we can count on, and that can be used, though, across the district, so, which is nice. Buildings and grounds, again, we're working on that replacements of tractors and trucks. Again, it's budget neutral because George has been building those grounds in, and so we've been looking on that for a couple of years, and some of the vehicles are getting pretty old, and they're, you know, they're used for plowing and all those types of stuff, so they do take a beating, so we're trying to come up with a plan long-term on how we can cycle that to make it more reasonable, because they're really expensive, you know, everything's 50, 60, 70,000 dollars.
Yep.
Some tractors are very expensive.
And I just, this week, today, actually, I finished my budget meetings with the different administrators and directors, so some of these things will change again in two weeks. It was brought to my attention when I met with Brian that the floor scrubber at Parkdale, it can't be fixed, and we need a new one. So, this plan could change, or we could try to find, is there money that hasn't been being spent in contractual or materials and supplies that we could shift here for the one year to meet those equipment needs? But we're going through that process, we don't really know yet.
Yeah, that's good. What I like about appropriating a fund balance, if you're going to appropriate it, it's a good use of this, you could put in the tractor, that you're appropriating fund balance, and two things will happen, you're managing fund balance, you're, you may not have as much money to put in the reserves, but yet, this is a little more flexible, and then the next year, you pull the tractor and the truck out, you may replace it with something else, but reduce the appropriate funding, so you don't tax it back, you set money aside, it's saved in the general fund, and I just think, you know, you mentioned, and if there's money available in this year's budget to run a commerce or something, that's, you know, another way to manage it, but I wouldn't hesitate to buy this type of equipment, especially, we got unappropriated right now, 1.7 million, we're probably going to add to that, so I mean, it's, if you think we're going to do heavy spend money on trucks and tractors, this is the year to do that, to put it down in the needs. You possibly have a new guy, he's probably going to run a jet.
I don't know about a jet, but you know.
Big shiny tank.
And then also Billy's Brown, 1.0 FD for cleaner position, you know, we added the classrooms, and we were really tight on the cleaning staff at Parkdale, so we really need to add a diminution cleaner to be able to take care of the ingrained in our classrooms, and now there'll be four classrooms, and quite frankly, they're kind of dirty, you know, it's the kids that touch it and stuff, and they really need to be attended to.
Our cleaners currently are all part-time people, aren't they? Do we have full-time cleaners?
Yes, we do, yeah.
We do?
Yeah. So, before we, so one thing is, like, you know, like, when I was talking with the admin team about trying to be conservative this year, you can see that there's, most of the expenses are associated with the building subs, is a big question for us, you know, if we're trying to be strategic about how we're going to be using the reserves so that the expenses, I'm sorry, the expenses are kind of, you know, to a minimum. And so, here we go, the proposed appropriations, again, this is a work in progress, Ms. George is filling it in as she feels comfortable, but again, there may be some adjustments, right? So, it's just kind of, just kind of getting started, and you can see here at the bottom, the total is $41,296,438, but of course, subject to change as we move through the process.
Right, and as we discussed earlier, you know, this is just our first flush at the salary number, that number could go up, that number could go down as we go through the process, the same with BOSIs. The meeting is tomorrow, that number could go up, that number could go down, you know, it's just part of the process.
Yeah, that's okay.
So, revenues, the revenues, again, the property tax levy is $793,301, 3.13, which went up slightly again.
Yes, I can explain that on the tax levy slide. I was doing the percentage against what we levied, which was, or what we, what was the cap last year, but we levied lower than the cap.
Much so.
Right, but that's that little difference, and I just found it, and I'm like, oh.
Last time, I think it was 2.96?
Yeah.
And now it was adjusted.
It's 3.13, and that's where that difference came from. I was-
Let's see, again.
Was that a carryover amount that drove that calculation up then?
No.
Was that carryover?
My spreadsheet has been built, I don't know for how many years, back when I was at York Boy, so all my calculations are built, and it goes from tax cap to tax cap, but because we went below the tax cap, I was using the wrong number to do the percentage, I had to adjust which number I used.
So, let's see, anything in particular here, you can see the state aid is an important piece, obviously, that's the foundation aid, these two, sales tax, again, you know, we're hopeful that it may be more than $100,000, but again, just trying to be conservative at this point in time. Any questions at all?
And I've gathered additional revenue information through my budget meetings from special ed, so that'll be in the next flush of numbers.
Capital outlay, so we're going to do another capital outlay, which is $100,000 on Parkdale, primarily interior renovations, replacement of the phones, again, we're looking on that throughout the district, and this is just in the space, replacement of some existing cameras, replacement of exterior concrete sidewalks and curbs, some asphalt, and then some wall monsters.
That's a lot for $100,000.
Well, we'll see if it-
Yes, we-
Are these broad, on purpose, in case we get good bids?
Yes, so you kind of chip away at it as much as you can.
Next slide, I'll be able to explain the tax cap.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, my calculations for the increase, whoops, I probably did that, I'll try not to touch it, one more. It goes from the cap calculation to the cap calculation, but last year, we went out below the cap, so I needed to adjust my formula, this number to this number, instead of this number to that number, and that's where the difference came from.
Starting point from the 25,309 starts at the top.
It starts up here.
Right, then you got the growth factor, right, so that's-
Right, but I did it here instead of here, just for this percentage piece.
I can understand it now, yep.
It's telling if all of, went under the tax cap last year.
Which makes it higher this year.
And if you're going back to your days at a prior district, it is-
When you- When you do person.
Unexpected. What an unexpected delight for our community that caused your calculation to go awry.
Now, how much lower than the tax cap were we last year?
I'd have to, it's the, it's the twenty-five, three fifty-three minus the twenty-five, three oh nine, whatever that is. I think it was forty-three thousand, something like that.
Was not a significant amount in a budget this size, but it, but it was, it was intended to set us in a direction of not necessarily having to, to budget to the tax cap every year, you know? And, and that, uh, and that this, this additional revenue that we're receiving from the state, from the federal government, from, from sales tax, from whatever, uh, it, it should allow us to be, uh, more cautious about property tax increases for, for the people who reside in our district. So they, you know, our, for years, we've been talking about trying to get it down in the two percent range, you know, two point something, you know? And so, uh, they, you know, I'm not gonna let us forget that, you know? And so it says three point one three, but I'd like to see.
Two point nine six.
I'd like to see it below three.
It was cap to cap, it was two point nine six. I know, it's just how it, how it changes.
And the rate was even lower than that.
Right.
So, so what, what really people care about is the rate.
Is the rate.
Because that's their tax bill, you know? And if their tax bill goes up by two percent, they're gonna feel a lot better than if their tax bill goes up by three point one three percent, you know?
In, in our finance committee, Dan, I know I talked, that I was gonna try to update this number. I forgot to update it in the slide, to include the projected project that's coming on. And I, I have it in my back paper.
This coming year, but for the.
Right, for the years coming up, so.
Well, we, we know the community approved the one percent increase for that purpose.
Yep.
So, you know, if I, if I'm stuck in the twos, when that comes in, it would be one percent more than that. I know that. I, but, but not this budget.
Yes, not the.
And so here's the tax rate. Uh, Jane, I don't know if you wanted to.
Right, and that's exactly what Dan was just saying. If you look at the full value rate, it's so hard to look at these rates because of the equalization. So I equalize it, and going back to here, our equalized rate is less. And it's really, if you go back more, it was in the fourteen, fourteen dollars and something. So it's even down from there. So when I apply the equalization rate here, it comes to thirteen twelve. When I apply the equalization rate here, it comes to thirteen twelve. When I apply the equalization rate here, it comes to thirteen twelve.
Yeah.
And it.
But when a taxpayer looks at what they paid in taxes last year, which is the first, when my bill arrives, the first thing I do is pull out the pay, the checkbook to see what my bill was last year. And then I look to see what my bill is this year. It's a track, it's a line, you know, all that math stuff that we learned earlier in.
Algebra.
And, and it tells me what the percentage increase is.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, uh, last year, it was down in the tubes, you know, when I did that. So, and I felt good about that.
Yeah.
So let's try to.
And part of that.
Everybody feel good this year.
Go back to the tax cap. Part of that, Dan, comes from, for the town of Aurora, this number right here, which shows the growth. And now if we go, one more slide, the increase in properties. And if you go back, it's, you know, it's a bigger increase in properties too. And that's what's impacting, that's how you're getting.
See a lot of building going on and, uh, yeah, all that.
It, it's all that algebra, yeah.
Well, and in the past, big buildings go, coming up, going up everywhere in a community, it sounded like it was helpful for the taxes, and it was. But it usually brought along more students, which meant more expenditure. But that has not happened for us, for some reason. So they're building these buildings, but they're not, they don't have any children in them.
So here we are again, uh, the New York State District Mobility Ability Supplement for pupil expenditure comparison. Again, we, we look at like, you know, what we're spending for people and comparing it to, uh, we changed this for this year. So this is a completely different formula, a different comparison. And so, um, they used to do similar schools. Instead now, they compare us to other area county schools, and you can see we're below that. And we're significantly below all New York State schools. So again, we like to look at this and say, you know, we, we're doing quite well. Our kids perform well, and we're doing it, uh, quite cost-effectively.
And the biggest change is they used to compare general ed numbers to special ed numbers, and they don't do that anymore.
So here we are, we're cruising through the budget process. Um, we got some budget, we have three budget meetings in March. And then we have meetings in, in April. Of course, during that process, you know, we'll be, uh, assuming, uh, tax cap, uh, cap, cap, levy, unit calculation. Um, and that's March first, but that can change, right? So, um, do you want to access that, because that's what we have to do. Uh, then we'll go through the adoption, uh, school district budget, probably in March before her in April. Uh, we'll move through that process until we get to May sixteenth, where we vote with all the other school districts in New York State.
Any questions or comments with people there? Thank you very much. Stay tuned for more of budget season. Well, is there item eleven, any other suggestions for the board?
Just briefly, uh, if you read the onboard magazine, uh, that recently arrived, uh, you'd see an article about, uh, the different new, uh, laws regarding pilots. And, uh, and it's a significant improvement for us, because if you recall, one of the large industries in our community requested and received, uh, a decrease in assessment, uh, not too many years ago. The result being, we had to come up with a refund for them of hundreds of thousands of dollars that we had to, we had to, uh, materialize on, uh, which we didn't expect to have to do. Uh, the, the, the new, uh, laws regarding pilots give school districts much more say in, uh, in whether the pilots are granted to begin with. And secondly, it gives a timeline, which makes it less likely that the district would have this imposed upon them in a surprised way. So, uh, it's worth a read. It's just a one-page article.
Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Brunson. Um, item twelve, is there anyone who wishes to remove a consensus item? Hearing none, may have a motion to approve this consensus item. By Mr. Cassidy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Flowers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, carried seven zero. Item thirteen, uh, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education perform a first reading to adopt the policies in, in your agenda collectively known as new section three thousand. May I have a motion? Cassidy, second.
Yeah, my, my favorite policy was display of the flag of the United States. It was like twenty-five words, and I understood every word. Supposed to be an improvement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brunson.
As opposed to the policy that was fourteen pages.
Yes, I didn't understand every word.
Again, referring to my earlier comment of gratitude to both the committee and the board for their careful attention to all of the policies and our policy manual. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, carried seven zero. Item B, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education perform a first reading to retire the integrity of the remaining current section three thousand policies as listed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Move by Mrs. Daniel, seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, carried seven zero. Item C, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education perform a first reading to adopt the policies listed in your agenda collectively known as new section four thousand. May I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy, seconded by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion?
Um, yes, just briefly, uh, I sent a email with a couple of questions for you right now. So I would like to see a draft of this administrative organization chart that, when it's, when it's ready, that's gonna have to be located in the superintendent's office. I think it would be very helpful for us to, to be able to see who reports to whom and how that works. Secondly, uh, in your, um, responsibility of administrative personnel policy, I think it was that one. Maybe it was the authority of administration. But at any rate, in one of those policies, you listed the, uh, who, who were administrators? Superintendents, assistant superintendent, directors, principals, assistant principals. But nowhere did you have coordinator down. And I noticed one of the positions that you're thinking about for next year is a coordinator. So either, either that position should become a director, or the posi, or the, the word coordinator should be inserted with the thought that sooner or later, you might want to hire a coordinator or something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback. Other comments? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, carried seven zero. Item D, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education perform a first reading to retire the entirety of the current section four thousand as listed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Daniel, seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, carried seven zero. Item E, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Lori Sahaki and effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Brunson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Flowers. All of the discussion?
Well, with this feature will be very missed, and, uh, having worked for thirty-seven years in our district is, is a real tribute to stick-to-it-iveness and, and all, all the professionalism that you could imagine. I, I, I have nothing but good things to say. I know we're not supposed to talk about the individuals in a positive or negative way, but I don't care. I'm old enough that I'm gonna just say that I'm gonna miss Lori.
Thank you. Mrs. Sahaki will be honored at a
Yes, you will.
future date in the festival. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, carried seven zero. Item fourteen, uh, items of information, the next regularly scheduled board meeting is Wednesday, March first, with the additional March meetings listed for your enjoyment, and, uh, two ECASB conferences are events coming up. Are there any other?
Don't forget, May or March, um, sixth is also going to be the board workshop, just for the, uh, administration.
Thank you very much. Where we will share our learning from the Ms. Buck conference. Is there anything else for the board? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Flowers, seconded by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion? All those in favor?